Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manasha Plan Common Council to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm a day early.
(inaudible)
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 If we could have the roll, please.
Alderman Repella?
Here.
Alderman Nichols?
Here.
Alderman Taylor?
Here.
Alderman Severnick?
Here.
Alderman Langdon?
Here.
Alderman Schmidt?
Here.
Alderman Tomgrotty?
Here.
Alderman Tedgrotty?
Here.
All are present.
We have two public hearings this evening. The first is for 528 Milwaukee Street. Director Schrader, would you like to tell us a little bit about this?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. So in front of the Common Council this evening is a consideration for proposed rezoning to basically match and reflect a requested certified survey map. So the property owners of 528 Milwaukee Street purchased additional lands to the west as well as to the south from the railroad. So what the proposed CSM does is it consolidates those lands that were acquired to add those to the existing parcels as well as consolidate some of the non-conforming parcels out there. So the City of Manasha does not allow split-zone parcels or zoning two zoning districts on one site. So basically with that CSM, we actually, from a staffing standpoint, did require that the rezoning be accomplished to match that zoning district. The proposed or the requested zoning district is a I-1 heavy industrial on the southern lot and a C-1 general commercial on the northern lot. So that would be the lot that currently houses the bar. Through the City Plan Commission, it was recommended that the southern lot be reduced to an I-2. So the recommendation that is out there is that the southern lot is an I-2 or general industrial district to be allowed to move forward in that fashion. The benefits of the I-2 zoning district versus a heavy industrial district is clearly the use, the intensity of the use, but also the non-conforming. So the heavy industrial requires a one-acre minimum lot size. While the rezoning would or the CSM consolidation would reduce that nonconformity or make that lot larger, it would still not meet the minimum lot size. So the general industrial does not have a minimum lot size. So allowing that to be rezoned to I-2 would still be industrial, but it would also allow for the conforming lot dimension. So staff, as well as Plan Commission, did recommend approval of the proposed rezoning, again for Lot 1, the northern lot, to be rezoned holistically to C-1 general commercial, as well as Lot 2, the southern lot, to be rezoned to I-2 general commercial. This is obviously contingent upon the rezoning or, excuse me, the CSM being approved as well. So the I-1 on the public hearing notice is because that is what the applicant has applied for, but within the actual ordinance below, it does say I-2. So the ordinance, as it's drafted, is recommendation from staff as well as Plan Commission, but the proposed hearing notice is as they petitioned, if you will.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item this evening? No one? Seeing no one, we'll move on to Item 2, the proposed rezoning for the third addition to Woodland Hills. Director Schrader, would you like to explain that as well?
Certainly. So in front of the Common Council this evening is the proposed rezoning of the third addition of Woodland Hills as well as the Woodland Lakes cottages. So this plan unit development has been in discussion for several meetings now. Over the past few months, the Plan Commission as well as the Common Council have approved the PUD plan, the plan unit development plan for this area, basically looking at residential subdivision with a common community clubhouse, which also triggers that need for that PUD zoning district. So with this, again, part of the PUD process is that the PUD plan goes through Plan Commission as well as the City Common Council. So those were accomplished as well as approved. If that does get approved, then the PUD goes through the official rezoning process. So the official rezoning process has started. That process did go in front of the City Plan Commission on October 4th. The City Plan Commission did review that and did approve that proposed rezoning from R-1 Single Family District to PUD Plan Unit Development with the plan as approved attached, with one exception, I believe, to Lot 279. So that would be the one lot that's separated slightly or along Kelly Lake Drive. So there's three current houses along Kelly Lake Drive and one lot to the north. So there's only proposed, looking at the preliminary plot, there's only one additional lot next to those Kelly Lake Drive houses before the road kind of S's and adds to that transition before it would be rezoned to PUD. So that is, again, staff as well as the Plan Commission recommendation to approve ordinance O-821 rezoning from R-1 Single Family to PUD Plan Unit Development.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item?
Hi, my name's Melanie Simon. I'm at 2517 Gottling Way. I think most of you have probably heard me talk several times on this. Really, I'm asking, before you put a final approval on this, that you consider asking the developer to really think about making sure the density of the homes along the pond match what's already there. I know several of us have spoken about the fact that when we purchased our lots, we were told, not by the city but by the developer that we purchased our lots from, that those were wetlands across from us on the pond and there would not be any building that was there. It sounds like something has changed and they're no longer considered wetlands. The new developer knows that we were told that. There was a meeting where several of us spoke up on that. Several of you from the city are now aware of that as well and have been for several meetings. So while I don't know that you have a legal obligation, I would hope that you would think about the individuals that are there and before you move forward, generate some type of an agreement from the developer that remains or that keeps the integrity of the density of the homes along the pond. I've asked for that at several meetings. It's never actually even been discussed by either any of the council members or members of the planning commission. So that's what I'm asking for. Hopefully you'll consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll call the public hearing to a close and we'll move on to the report of department heads, staff and consultants. Do we have a motion for the minutes and the communications? Alderman Severnick?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Minutes A through K and communications L through P.
So motion is second to receive minutes and communications. Is there any discussion? Alderman Severnick?
I'd like to just touch on Item O a little bit. I thank Sam, Community Development Director, for updating us, but I would hope that the city can continue to take a hard line on this and follow through and not think that, okay, they're not going to cooperate, but we need to continue to make this a priority. And I think it's a priority on this council to see that this happens. So I'll just leave it at that without getting into any more details, but I want my colleagues to know how I feel about this and that it's very unfortunate, not just for the City of Manasha, but Fox Crossing itself and the entire Fox Cities, that a wonderful development like this could be upheld.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Item M, the IT Steering Committee. I appreciate that a slate of committee members has been brought forward. In fact, since it had not been brought forward for some time, I was asked by Alderman Severnick to sort of work on creating a committee myself, which I had been doing and talked to several of the people that are on this list, so I'm grateful that they are there because they too had indicated to me that they would be interested in serving on this committee. There is one person that I recently spoke with last week, and that is one of our IT people, Andrea Oski, who indicated to me a real interest in serving on this committee as well. And so I'm hoping that we can have her name added to that list today.
So via ordinance, the Finance Director as well as the IT, I'm not sure what her title is, but Andrea would also be on there. I'm not sure about Brian as well, but at least-
I'm not sure of, excuse me, I'm having a hard time hearing you this evening and if everybody-
I keep moving it closer.
Because I'm on the end, when you don't have your microphone closer to your mouth, I can't hear you very well.
Jennifer and Andrea would be on the committee via ordinance.
Okay.
I'm not sure about Brian, the third IT person. I don't remember, but-
That's okay.
But those two would automatically be on the committee.
Okay. So I can, so we can expect to see them-
Yes.
-at committee meetings as well. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I echo what Alderman Severnick said, Sam. And one thing about being up here a lot of years, everything goes in a circle. And there's a point, they're going to want to come to us with something and work with us. And I would be embarrassed to work the way they're working with us on this project, that everything has to just fit perfectly. And so I would definitely remind them of that, that we'd be willing to work with them and not hold up a development like this. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item F is public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening?
Aldermen, all the women and employees of the City of Manasha. My name is Tom Miller, and I was part of the Committee for redistricting in the City of Manasha. Bear with me, I've just got my cataracts done and eyesight is somewhat limited. First, the redistricting committee comes from a really wide varied group of residents of the city. You know many of them, obviously. City employees Haley, Joe and Sam. Also Debbie Gonzalez and Mike Taylor were part of it. Gary Koopman was part of it. Kay Phet, myself, and Adam Sheffer Kempes was also part of it. We've put a lot of time and energy into it, and out of that meeting, we think we came up with some options for you guys to discuss. At the last presentation, after the county wards, I'm sorry, had been presented, we were asked to come back with additional options for the city wards, which is what we are presenting this evening, and you'll hear from Haley and Sam and Joe on that subject. For the record, the redistricting committee will be giving you four options, of which you can pick from any one of them or come up with your own idea. We understand that in 2010, you came up with your own idea after that census. There were several things that we took a look at when we looked at the districts and wards that you'll see presented later today. The county has already come up with district guidelines that we had to follow. There were city jurisdictions, school jurisdictions, village jurisdictions, and obviously the 2020 census was extremely important. And we considered also the great amount of people that are coming to the east side of the city and growth in that area and the downtown expansions that'll be taking place in the next couple of years. With all these issues and guidelines, we were given to work at the last meeting, you asked us to come up with options. So we're concerned that something happens this evening, you guys will, it'll be in your hands to come up with whatever option you decide. We are also giving you a recommendation at this time with those options. For the record, the city wards that we laid out for you were not, we did not consider where the individual alderman lived. Many of us had no idea where the alderman lived. We had some general idea, but most of the members of the committee did not know where the alderman lived, and we were looking at the guidelines given to us by the county to do the automatic districts. The one last thing, for the record, many of us really took a lot of pleasure and put a lot of time and energy into putting this together. We wanted to see growth and activity going on in a positive way for the City of Manasha. And with that, when the time comes, I think it's Jay on the list of things to do, Haley, Sam and Joe will present the different districts that we're come up with and the districts for the automatic areas. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to have items separated this evening? Alderman Severnick?
I'm just wondering if we should just go through them all again. So at this time, Mayor, I'll move for approval, well, move for approval of the Common Council Minutes of 10:42.
So motion is second, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Is there a motion for Item 2, the street use applications? Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. I will make the motion to accept the street use application for the Hometown Halloween that's sponsored by the Manasha Parks and Recreation Department. It's on October 28, 2021, and the time is 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And also, the street use application for Gather Around the Christmas Trees on December 2nd, 2021, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. That's for the holiday lighting. And I'd just like to also add that Randy Repella is the sponsor, but his team is also part of this, and they've been doing one heck of a job decorating downtown Manasha for us this year. Thank you.
There was a motion and a second by Alderman Taylor. Discussion, Alderman Severnick?
I'm sure the rest of the council received the communication from Ms. Taylor, concerns of gathering around the Christmas tree. And I think we should change the wording to holiday. I don't, I just don't want to see a lawsuit. And if it makes people happy. And on the record, I could have it worded both ways, but for this reason, I don't know. I guess I'd ask advice from the city attorney, do you think it would be okay if I amended it for the holiday lighting of the tree? Or you don't?
Yeah, it would be whatever you would desire, either way. I mean, the-
I don't want to make this an issue where else I'm, if you want to say no and half say yes.
Before you make the amendment, if we could have Alderman Grotty speak?
Sure. This is the title of a song.
Okay.
It's not, it's a song for the event. I just think it's ridiculous.
Okay.
It's a Christmas tree.
Randy, you feel the same?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, it was supposed to be called Gather Round. You hashed out different names. I'm fine with whatever, if it's-
I am with either way, but I'm just trying to protect this community, and you know other communities have been attacked and lawsuits have been filed. And here, you're doing a great job of having something decent in our downtown and-
You know, I can easily go to Gather Round. I'm very confident of our city attorney. She's outstanding, and I would fully believe she'd win every case. So Gather Round is, we can just change it to Gather Round if that suits us. And then we're covered. We don't have the word Christmas in there at all.
Because your committee is called the Holiday-
Right.
And not-
Holiday Light Committee. That's what I came up with eight months ago.
Mayor, you have an opinion or?
I was just looking to see what the song looked like.
Yeah, I've never seen the song in Rudolph, but- Randy, are you singing?
(inaudible).
Yeah.
Yes, Randy.
It's think, it's-
Don't play it. Turn your mic off.
Doesn't have any lyrics.
Oh, just the music?
That was only three seconds. He's good. Oh.
Says it numerous times.
What, Ted?
(inaudible).
It says Christmas numerous times in the song, so.
All right. I'm not dropping. You guys decide what you want to do, but yeah, that's a good one.
So motion is second. If we could have a roll call vote, please? Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
We have a motion for Item 3. Alderman Grotty?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion from the Personnel Committee for the pay grade adjustment for the Building Inspector slash Housing Specialist from a grade 20 to a grade 15, and place the current Building Inspector/House Specialist at the Step 3 effective the 1st of 2022.
So motion is second by Alderman Nichols. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for Item 4? Alderman Schmidt?
I'll make the motion to approve the certified survey map as presented for the lot adjustment and partial consolidation of 528 Milwaukee Street and the adjacent railroad parcels as outlined in our thing with the asterisk on A of an ordinance-
Apparently we're not picking up-
I'm sorry. An asterisk with the ordinance amending the zoning classification to coincide with the proposed CSM, with Lot 1 being zone C-1 and Lot 2 being zone I-2.
Is there a second? So motion and a second by Alderman Taylor. Any discussions? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries five three.
Do we have a motion for Item 5? Oops, sorry. I gotta turn your mic on.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the preliminary plot for the first addition to Lake Park Heights as presented, finding that the plot conforms to the municipal ordinance, the city comprehensive plan and the surrounding development with conditions listed A through N.
Is there a second? I don't, did Tom get the second?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing no dis, Alderman Langdon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure, but, I mean, I don't go all around, but I've never seen a private road in a city. How is, how is that able to happen? Who's going to own that road?
So we have numerous private roads in the city, but-
Yeah.
Director Schrader, did you? Oh. Okay.
Would you like me to touch on that?
Sure. Well, I'd just like to know who's going to own the road.
Yeah, so that would be more built, more of a driveway, and the developer would own that. So again, that was part of the PUD process with the planning and development to have that private driveway. There will be a development agreement that comes forward at a future meeting, and that will clearly designate who operates, who maintains, who owns it, which will be the HOA or the Homeowners Association built from all of the property owners. All of the 98 property owners will be a part of that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for Item 6?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the preliminary plot, I'm going to try to say that twice, for the first addition to Lake Park Heights as presented, finding that the plot conforms to the municipal ordinance, the city comprehensive plan and the surrounding development with conditions listed A and B in our packet.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call, did you have discussion mark or you just? Okay. I wanted to make sure I didn't get ahead of you. Okay. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item I is action items. The first is the accounts payable and payroll. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of October 1st through October 14, 2021, in the amount of $1,669,770.77.
So motion and a second by Alderman Tedgrotty. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item 2 is the beverage operators licenses. We do have one recommended for denial and two for approval. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2021 through 2023 licensing period as listed under approved in the clerk's memo dated October 8, 2021.
Is there a second?
(inaudible).
So motion and a second by Alderman Tomgrotty. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
I don't know if Ms. Hortish is here this evening? No? Okay. Do we have a motion regarding the denial? Alderman Nichols?
Before I make the motion, I'd like to ask the city attorney captain a question.
Sure.
Thank you. Attorney Captain, this particular applicant has some things listed that are from 2006 on her record. If you could explain to us what we should make of those dates, given that it's 2021? Is that right, Mayor? While there is a statute that indicates if somebody has a felony on their record and it is not pardoned, that they are not able to receive a, an alcohol license, there is another statute, you know, statutes have to be read in conjunction with each other. There is another one that indicates that a person cannot be discriminated- There is another one that indicates that a person cannot be discriminated against based on a conviction record if there is not a close nexus between the, what occurred and the license applied for. You also have to look at the time period that has elapsed since the conviction. And in this particular case, it would be my recommendation that the city is not able to take those into consideration since they occurred so long ago and there are no other convictions that have occurred since then. Just to let everyone know, the applicant, I did indicate to the applicant that I did not think it was necessary to come. And I did inform her of what my, what I would be saying at the council meeting. So that might be the reason why she is not here. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Captain. With that, I'll move to approve the operator's license application for Jolene Hortesh.
So motion in a second, discussion? Alderman Grady?
Oh, I wasn't going to, but.
Oh, okay.
But now I am.
You shouldn't depress your life if you didn't want to.
Well, I did, but then they accepted it. And I agree with Alderman Nichols' suggestion here because I'm thinking, looking at, this is all credit card type fraudery. This is not, not alcohol related or anything like that as to a bartender serving or something. I just wanted to verify that. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you. So I was going to ask to the attorney or Chief Steicher then, you know, reading, going through all this stuff, the intent substantially, substantially related, it's a question mark. I know it says if you're a felony, but my question is, is that, I think you answered it, Attorney Captain, that as a counsel, even though it hasn't been pardoned, the counsel can still overturn? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item three? I'm not sure who. Alderman Seven?
Do you have questions?
Alderman Nichols?
No, I don't have a question.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we approve the development agreement.
Oh, no, hold on. We're on change of agent.
Oh, three.
Yeah.
All right.
Make a motion for change of agent, Walgreens Company, 305 R.C. Street, and Asha for the 2021, 2022 license here.
Is there a second? Is a motion in a second by Alderman Nichols? Any discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, didn't we just do one of these like two months ago or something? So a lot of turnaround.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, now before we do the development agreement, if there's no objections, we do have the two developers here this evening and they'd like to show us their project.
Do you mind if we stand in front of?
Yeah, otherwise we're not going to be able to hear you very well.
Walk around and do whatever you want.
Oh, it's wireless?
Yep, you can pick it up and carry it with you if you want.
Got you. I was like, I'm hearing conflicting things. Walk around, but I have to be next to this.
It was a test.
All right, well. What was that? I played lacrosse, but I can kind of do it. All right, well, thank you very much for allowing us to present today. We're very excited to show you what we've been working on. Thank you. So we are Dark Horse. We are a young real estate development company based out of the Fox Valley. My name is Sam Schmidt. I, sorry. My background is mechanical engineering, physics, and applied mathematics. A few years ago, I bought 513 West College Avenue in Appleton and redeveloped it into the 513 wedding venue, as well as be a development to oversee 2,000 square feet of commercial space. Sorry.
My name is Cole Alsbach. So as Sam, I was born and raised in Appleton and I now live in Manasha. Before getting into, thank you. My neighbor. Yeah, broke down in front of Stan's house, actually, in my truck. So, yeah, yeah. Well, he was, he was very nice. He helped figure it out. But yeah, before starting in real estate development, I was in construction and worked as a project manager for a couple of commercial construction companies for about five years after college. And now just really focused on real estate development. We see downtown Manasha as a great opportunity and we really just want to enhance the downtown atmosphere.
So yeah, we're both born and raised in the area and we really value the opportunity to give back to our community. And that's why we made our, our, our vision to be reinvigorate and revitalize communities through thoughtful and bold development. We want to find underutilized spaces and transform them to something beautiful for the community. And that's what led us to 130 Main. We purchased this building in April and at the time, it was very underutilized. It's vacant office space. And we've been working with Hoffman Development and Construction to turn it into 14 market rate apartments with 5,000 square feet of commercial space on the first floor. And in doing this, we will be adding an additional fourth floor for allowing lofted apartments, as well as updating the exterior facade, overhauling all MEP systems, and repaving the parking lots.
MEP is mechanical, electrical, plumbing. That way? Oh, man. Technical difficulties. Perfect. So over the last couple of months, like Sam said, we've been working with Hoffman Plan Design and Construction to figure out how we want to redevelop this property. So this is the site plan that we've come up with and major thing to point out here is that we're maintaining the current building footprint. So the landscaping and parking plan is very much conceptual right now and will be dependent on what we can do with that first floor space, what kind of use that commercial space ends up being. So here's a view of, well, overall rendering of the building, but you're traveling east on Main Street. And something to notice here is the addition of that first floor, as well as the change in facade. So we plan on staying the brick. And then currently, there's storefront windows extending from the floor up to the third floor and we're going to break that up and add more colorful facade. Not sure what material that will be, but we're working through that right now. So here's another view of the building, traveling west on Main Street, giving you a good view of that main entrance there.
I just want to add, another thing we've been enjoying doing lately is bringing art to different downtown areas. Recently, we worked with a nonprofit summer of service and we brought a large mural into downtown Appleton located at 516 West Lawrence Street. We are currently in discussion with multiple different artists about using this large space of wall on the development to hopefully work with. Are you the one? Are you into artwork?
You're the artist.
You're the artist? All right. Well, so we've been, oh, perfect. So maybe we don't need the other artists, but we're really hoping to do much like we did with.
Well, we hope to do something like we did with our last project where we worked the
city, help really understand the spirit of Manasha and represent it in a piece of artwork. And we want to do that throughout all of our projects, to slowly bring just a really cool accent of art.
So this view really gives you a view of the backside of the building. And also, you can start to see the kind of view that you're going to get from these balconies on the fourth floor, not only of the marina, but also the surrounding area as well. So of the 14 apartments in the building, 10 of which are going to be one bedroom units, three of which would be two bedroom and then one studio unit. Here's an example of a one bedroom unit on the second floor. And then this is a one bedroom lofted unit, starting on the third floor with this layout on the left here. And then on the right would be the lofted part up on the fourth floor. So very open concept on the third floor would be walking into the kitchen, living room space, and then stairs extending up to the bedroom with an attached balcony and then walk-in closet, en suite bathroom, what have you. So overall schedule, right now, we're working through the conceptual design phase with Hoffman and their architect team, planning to wrap that up by the end of the year here and get it out to bid. So hopefully, we can begin construction in January with an eight month construction period, which would get us complete an opening about a year from now. So we are, right now, we submitted a special use permit for review by the Plan Commission on November 2nd, I believe, to change the zoning to allow for the mixed, mixed use of the property. So again, really want to appreciate you guys for taking the time to hear us out and allow us to share our vision with you. And we look forward to working with you and to enhance downtown Manasha. You guys have any questions?
It looks like you have one. Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. So, and I don't know, you know, even about others, others, but on the first floor, mixed use, how do you decide what's going to go in there or who do you talk to or?
So right now, we're exploring a couple of different options. We first started out with trying to get a restaurant in that first floor space, but restaurateurs after COVID, they're really not looking to expand right now due to not having enough capital and manpower right now is not that great either. So really open to anything right now. If we could land a restaurant down there, that would be awesome. Also, talking to a potential office tenant to taking that space as well.
Okay, thank you. And yes, I mentioned Tom is a professional artist, so homegrown Manasha, so maybe after the meeting, give him, give him a talk to, so thank, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, Tom?
I know it's probably too early, but when, or when you decide what is happening on the first floor, is there any way, right now, I'm just looking at a building that's coming out of concrete. There's no softening, there's no vegetation or anything. Are there plans for some scaping of some sort within the surrounds of your building?
Yeah, it's, it's possible. So for example, if we get a restaurant that would really like to utilize that drive-through, we might not be able to do much landscaping right there, but if it's an office tenant, we could add some landscaping there as well as in the back. Also dependent on the parking demands of who that first floor tenant would be, making sure we have enough parking for the residents, as well as if that's office space, their employees.
Thank you. Looks great.
Thank you.
With that, does someone want to make the motion?
One more question, Mayor. Thank you. So the parking will be in between 140 and 130 Main Street?
That's, that's a portion of it.
Okay. Otherwise, in the back of it, right?
Yep. 11 spots there and then 41 in the back.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you.
Did you want to make the motion, Alderman Nichols? Go ahead.
My question is probably both for you and for Director Schrader. Did you have a slide in there that outlined the, the dates by which you'll have accomplished things moving through the planning process? Thank you. I know it's in my development agreement here, but it's hard to find quickly. So finalizing construction plans right now is where you're at. So when would we see a site plan at the Plan Commission level? And that might be for Director Schrader.
So the developers have submitted an application for a special use permit. So with the special use permit would be that site plan approval. We were just talking today about the landscaping and the softening with the repayment possibilities, as well as to continue to look at, at our options there of how to continue to move them forward with, you know, the bulk of the project of being the building and making sure that, you know, we do meet and conform to the zoning code.
Yes, and I understand your dilemma of finding a tenant for that first floor and wanting to keep your project moving forward. My concern is how, and, and you're saying that your site plan landscape improvements are dependent upon that first floor occupant. And so how can we be assured that once their first floor occupant is, is achieved, once they have occupancy, a planned tenant that will have a landscape plan and site improvement plan as part of this project?
Yeah, so if, if they repaved the parking lot, if they take that down to the base course, regrade it, we need to have conversations about landscaping. So we were, again, talking just today about how to make that happen and the timing. We know if they're going to touch that, and it sounds like they, they do want to plan on it because it is in rough shape, we will be working through those details. So again, the conversation that I had with the team was just, just earlier today, so we will be following up with that. If it's not at the November 2nd Plan Commission meeting, it will be addressed, again, contingent upon the resurfacing of that parking lot.
But what about anything around the building as far as what Alderman Grady was talking about, softening the exterior?
I mean, again, a lot of the, a lot of the building, as well as the curbing, the sidewalks that are around the building, those aren't being replaced. So I don't believe they would be taking any of that out. In addition, within the C2 zoning district, I am almost positive the building landscaping isn't required. It's only triggered upon the approval of parking lots. So if you put a parking lot in, then you must do X. In addition, there's a lot of things with being an existing site versus a new development. So again, there's some, some areas there that, again, we can work with them to get some landscaping in to soften that up. But at the same time, there's, there's just certain site constraints being in existing development.
Okay, but then at any point when the parking lot itself, especially in the rear and to the east of the building, that small pocket parking lot, sort of, anytime those would be addressed through resurfacing, then landscape, and they would be brought into compliance with the landscaping ordinances at that time?
Yeah, so for instance, the, within the C2 zoning district, even the minimal landscape that is required once there is a parking lot, the Plan Commission does even have the option to waive it all or to come up with other solutions. So again, that's where we will, we'll, we'll work with the developers. I've heard it from a few different Aldermen. So again, and I've transferred that information over to them already today because, again, we want to make sure we address that if it's, if it is a concern of the council, which it does sound like it is.
Great. Just worth the ask because usually it comes through as part of the site plan. And in this case, it might be different, but it will still be addressed. Just a different process. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. The 1985 site plan does have, really puts you guys in a tight box. And I'm sure with your beautiful design of the building and the addition to it, which is really forward thinking, I really appreciate that. I'm sure you'll come through with whatever we need to do in the parking lots or the landscaping. And just like to welcome Dark Horse to the city of Manasha. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Seven?
So are we ready to make a motion?
All righty. So, at this time, I'll move for approval of the development agreement by and between the City of Manassia and Dark Horse 130 Main LLC for the property of 130 Main Street, Manassia.
I'm not sure who got second. Alderman Schmidt. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to add to that. In a lot of ways, I have to say, I really envy these two gentlemen because, you know, this is our hometown. The mayor, I and Sam went to Milwaukee, what was it, about four or five years ago? There was a group interested in this building and I always felt a little uncomfortable that we would be dealing with individuals that didn't know our hometown. And like mentioned, Cole lives in Manassia. Sam is from Appleton, from a very good family that's also done incredible things for the Fox Valley and we, and when I say I envy them, you look at them, they're young. Hopefully, they'll be a part of this community in the future. And this is, right, this is exactly what we need and we want you to become even a bigger part of Manassia, so I would encourage everyone to strongly support this.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Schrader, could you review the incentive package provided in the development agreement?
Certainly. So, basically, this is very similar to other development agreements that we've brought forward to the common council for your consideration. So, again, they have certain thresholds that need to be met. Upon meeting those thresholds, we, the city would agree to a pay-go style incentive, so pay as you go. And basically, what that is, is a percentage of the taxes that are collected on the increase get paid back to them as that incentive. So, again, the annual payment would be 75% of the new tax revenues collected. So, again, the additional funds that are collected on top of what's already there or the base value. And then that amount would continue on until we reach 20% of the added value upon the first year of the project being completion. So, for instance, if the base value is $500,000, they bring that up to $3 million. That increment there of the value is 2.5 million and their max then incentive would be 20% of that, $500,000. Is that right? Quick math. So, that's the logistics of that performance incentive. And do you have any questions beyond that?
Similar to other performance incentives offered by the city in the past, correct?
Very similar.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 8-0.
Thanks for coming tonight, guys. Item J is held over business. It's Resolution 40. Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. I know earlier, the speaker talked about going through all these and I don't think we have to go through all these. We do that as it comes to us and I have to say that I kind of am impressed in the timing that you were able to do this because I would not have wanted to be on this committee. There is one option, and thank you for the additional options and your service to the City of Manassia. One option stood out to me and that was option three. Do we have to, the wards would stay the same, the supervisory districts stay the same. It makes it easier for the election process, as Debbie had noted at the last meeting. So, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that the City of Manassia do the district set 2A, option three, and then I have, first, we're going to pass the resolution, right? So, at this time, I'll move for R4021.
And then it, and then you need to attach an option with that resolution. I think the one that you want is 3A.
Well, it is 3A, but I thought I needed to add that as an amendment.
Okay.
But if everybody has 3A, I don't have it on my desk.
You should have.
But I have it in my packet in the email, so as long as the rest of the body understands it. 3A, the change, just in case the committee isn't aware, all we did was switch the district numbers so that they conform with the elections, which was just a simple thing where four became three, three became four, six became seven, and seven became six. So, that's my motion.
So, there's a motion and a second for option 3A. Any other discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Trying to get my paper situated here. I have 3A in front of me. So, one of the options, although not the recommended option from the committee, well, let's, let me back up just a second. The recommended option from the committee was option two, which actually divided the city into four aldermanic districts with two aldermen per district, something that Manassia had a while ago, not in recent history, but it has been done in the past. That was their recommendation. One of the options provided was option three, which keeps the eight aldermanic districts with one alderman representative per district. And that one had some changes to wards, ward boundaries. So, I think what I hear Alderman Sevanik saying is that the council is going with, or his motion is to approve option three, but switch some of the numbers around. Basically, so that people sitting here can finish out their two-year term.
It basically keeps the odd-numbered districts that are currently odd, odd, and the even-numbered districts that are currently even, even, so it doesn't create a situation where we could have an alderman serving that would be in another district that could run for both districts at the same time? Crazy. You could have two more aldermen. Because you would still serve out your term, but you'd no longer be in that district.
Yes, because you still serve out your term.
Or you could run and have a three-year term.
Yeah, so.
Okay. I wrote some notes. First, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to the committee members who were nominated by this common council and took their responsibility very seriously. They followed the rules as prescribed by state law. I attended the meeting last Wednesday, or was it two Wednesdays ago? The meeting where they came up with these options. And I can tell you, they worked deliberately, they worked diligently, they did everything they needed to do and everything that they were asked to do. Given that, given that what's before us this evening, the motion on the table does follow the one-person, one-vote rule. The aldermanic districts are very evenly divided, they fall within the guidelines prescribed by law, and they will result in equal representation for all in the city, which is, I think, something that all of us can be proud of at this point and hang our hats on. And although not the recommended option from the committee, it is an option that will work for the next 10 years. Thank you.
Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say to the committee, I think you did, obviously, I've said this before, you did a great job, but I just want to say that maybe the governor could use your help.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 8-0.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first is ordinance seven. Is there a motion? Did you?
Sure, I'll make it.
Alderman Schmidt?
I'll make a motion, motion for ordinance 07-21 and ordinance amending, amending Title 13, making certain changes to the district rezoning, 528 Milwaukee Street and adjacent railroad parcels, 1-00396-00 and 1-00397-00, also 1-00446-00 and 1-00437-00.
Is there, there's a motion and a second by Alderman Taylor? Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 5-3.
Is there a motion for ordinance eight? Alderman Schmidt?
I will make the motion on ordinance 0-8-21 and ordinance amending the zoning classification of Woodland Lake cottages, lots 110 to 128 of the third addition to Woodland Hills as parcels listed and in our packet from single-family R1 to planned unit development, PUD.
So, motion and a second, is there any discussion? Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a young lady here this evening concerned about the size of the lots around the property and in some ways, I agree with her that the developer, I know that when they do this, they want to make them as small as possible to fit as many lots in to make more money. But to make everybody happy out there, I would still encourage that developer to possibly look at maybe taking one of the lots and making the others a little larger and if that's even possible at this point. I see Sam pulled down his mic, maybe he's got something to say. Go ahead.
I just will add that based upon the concept that has come forth to the Plan Commission before tonight, the preliminary plat does show a reduction in the number of houses along the pond. So, I think there's, I believe there's 10 houses along the existing, the west and the north side, or 10 lots, and south and on the east side is 13 now. So, I believe the number was closer to 15 or 16 at that time.
Okay, so attempts were, and I felt that those attempts were made. I think Alderman Rappella had that concern also and I appreciate that, Sam.
You didn't need it anymore? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 8-0.
Item N is public comment. If there's anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? We are adjourned, thank you.